Hey, good evening. It's Peter Casper. I'd like to call the town of Hebron's Board of Select and regular meeting for January sixteenth, twenty twenty five to order. For those that are able, if you can, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Turney, additions or changes to the agenda from the towns' perspective? Thank you so much, anyone on the board who wish to make a change, anything at all to the agenda? Okay, it was just the section four, and thank you, those that are attending in person and those that are attending online. Public comment, this section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. Or request that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue, simply make arrangements through the Town Manager's Office, obviously through me directly, or I extend the balance of the board as well would welcome. You comment or contacting them for additional comment or discussion. So Donna, do we have anybody online that wishes to make a public?
There's nothing online.
Anyone in the audience that wishes to make a public comment? Okay, Mr. Turney, that moves us to section five, which is good to know, and special recognition, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amongst us, we have Hebron Youth Baseball with us today, and they are here with a large check, I believe, with that young man. And we have the original check that was handed to us earlier for forty thousand dollars to assist the town in lighting of the ball field at Veterans Park. So I don't know if you want to get up and say anything and show that check to the camera. That would be great. Thank you very much for your generous donation, and that's going to go a long way with hopefully completing this project. Bottom ten.
I trust the camera. Yeah, my name is Ryan Price and the president of Ramus Baseball. When we had initially heard that there was ARPA funding available, our board came together and put a proposal forth to the Parks and Rec Commission for consideration, and it was quickly accepted and championed by Ben Jardine, who is the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Commission, Craig Bryant, who's the Parks and Rec Commissioner, and probably wouldn't have seen, you know, the light of day without Peter Casper, who was a champion of the project and a legacy onto the Parks and Rec Commission. So on behalf of myself, as the president, and Eric May as the Vice President of Ramus Baseball, we're here tonight to present a check in the amount of forty thousand dollars, the support of the lighting of Lion Field at Veterans Park. Do I get a few more? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So if I may, sit us for a second, voice, this is an example of what one person, one small group, can do to impact the community. And it's not just impacting the community today, it's impacted the community for years. So when you get older and you drive through town and there's lights on there and you're seeing some eight or nine-year-old boys and girls playing, think back to this moment that you can make a difference in your community by volunteering, you can make a difference by every dollar you donate and the time you donate. And thanks to the organization for your willingness to step up. Obviously, with ARPA funding, there was a lot of opportunities to improve our community, but you did it, you did one more thing, you stepped forward and said, how can we help? Not just ask for funds, but how can we contribute to ask for something that's significant, you ask for a significant amount of funds, but you're also willing to donate a significant amount of funds. And that commitment to our community and a reflection of your organization is appreciated very much, and you're making a difference that will last for years in our community. So thank you so much for your time, your commitment, always inspirational, right? Let's go, lifetime of commitment back from you as well, all right? So thank you again, thank you for coming down, thank you for taking the time to to present the check in the fashion that you did, to give it the recognition that it deserves. And obviously, those funds will go to use, and we're looking forward very much to when we're driving at night and we're seeing children playing on a ball field. And hopefully, it's the first of a series of things we can do to light up our parks. So thank you on behalf of the board and frankly, as a resident on behalf of our community, thank you very much for your contribution.
Thank you.
My boys, if everything goes well, you can leave, you can stay with the rest of the meeting if you want, if you want, totally up to you.
I promised them food, that's the only reason.
All right.
I got a basketball practice.
But thank you so much, Mr. Turney. Section six.
Next on the agenda is appointments and resignations. And under that, item A is the Hebrew Historic Properties Commission alternate under the packet. Ethan Stone R. has expressed interest in serving on the Hebrew Historic Properties Commission. There are two vacant alternate members positions. Mr. Stone has attended several Hebrew Historic Property Commission meetings, and then there's a proposed motion, and I believe Mr. Stone is here with us tonight.
Okay, so Mr. Larson, would you like to read the motion and then obviously?
Move that the Hebrew Board of Selectmen appoint Ethan Stone as an alternate member to the Hebrew Historic Properties Commission to a term to run until December two thousand twenty five.
Okay, motion's been read, and we can open it up. Actually, before we open up for a discussion, Ethan, is there anything you'd like to share with the board?
There's nothing in particular, I just want to say I've been looking for an opportunity to like serve my community, and this aligns so well with my interests, and I appreciate that Hebrew has a committee like this. And looking at their work, they're doing some fantastic things, and I hope to contribute as best as I can. Thank you.
Discussion or?
No, I'd just like to say, I've met Mr. Stone a few times at the Commission meetings, and he's always a willing participant, and I think he'll be a fantastic fit.
I agree, I mean, Ethan has come forward before for other openings and opportunities in the town, and it's it's great to see somebody that's willing to step up and volunteer, so thank you.
I just, and thank you, absolutely, we don't have enough volunteers, so when you do step up, we appreciate it very much in the town. I just had, just wanted your perspective on one thing, as you think about participating on a board, you have to balance your, you know, personal things that that are interest you, drive you, and versus that of the broader community. When you think of your interests relative to historic properties and preservation and being a an advocate for that, as and how that intersects with what you've seen in Hebron, you see sort of a difference between what your where your passion lies and what we've been doing so far? Do you see it in direct alignment? I just wanted your perspective on that.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I think part of why I moved to even, you know, a year plus ago was because there's the, there's a historic charm, you know, there's a historic element that everyone values highly, but there's also sort of a vision for the future, there's. I think I align well with the towns overall. Ideology of preserving the past, but also preserving it for the future.
Okay, I'm just interested because I think you make a good point, and and what, just as a resident, what I see, it's difficult sometimes to balance or create the balance through preservation and progress. How do you maintain that charm you talked about without preventing us from growing our tax base, from progressing? So how do you balance that out? And so I appreciate that because I, as again, as a resident, I I'm interested in people who are able to understand that balance, because that balance reflects the community more so than maybe their own, you know, personal, you know, it's because sometimes you get a lot of passion for something, an adication, you sort of get some tunnel vision. And so I I appreciate willing to step up and your willingness to think broadly about that balance in our community between preservation and progress, because we clearly have to respect both. So thank you for that. Additional discussions, I don't try to grill, I didn't mean to dilly, I just, I mean, always. Everyone.
I can just say one quick thing, Mr. Chairman. I'm very happy that we're kind of adding some new volunteers lately that are also of different age demographics as well. I think that's important and very exciting. I am the youngest selectwoman, so I appreciate having a younger generation join. Sorry, no, I'm just, I'm not trying to. I just think I'm really excited.
We gotta keep moving, I fall asleep. Oh, no, that's good, no, and that's the point is, we can't, we want new faces, we want new ideas, we want new challenges, a challenge our thinking. Again, as long as it's rooted in what's in the best interest of the community, we welcome that, so and thank you for your willingness to step forward. Unless there's additional discussion, we'll move to all of us in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain. Keith.
He's headed by.
Thank you, Dan.
Dan Larson.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Bonnie Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, motion passed unanimously, welcome aboard, thank you so much.
We'll be getting a letter from the town, so you can order a duck for it this morning.
All right, Mr. Turney, do the best you can, you were talking a little bit there, but thank you for joining us, and we'll move to the Town Manager's Report, which is seven on our agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we're full fledged into budgets. CIPs, Department Heads, head of Health District, all the other budgets that compile the town's budget. At the Insurance Consortium meeting today, and we came in, we set that at eight right now, right now? So it's down from a nine, seven, and you really don't have to lock in till March, but at least it's going in the right direction, we hope to continue to do it down, we're spiraling. That's consuming a lot of our time, and it will continue. So working with DOT and Eversource, and get the ocean to try to get the lights turned on, that's a continuing battle, which is just ridiculous, but we'll continue to kind of professionally, you know, continue to work with them to get that turned on.
Just turned on, just for someone's joining for the first time, turned on where?
So it's intersection of three sixteen Wall Street and sixty six. It's also the crosswalks down on eighty five and Church Street.
Oh, I didn't know that.
There's a ongoing battle with DOT and Eversource where they're, it's all set to go, and they just won't, for whatever reason, power them up. So we're trying to get to the bottom of that, we, Kathy's having conversations with the DOT Commissioner, I think, as late as today. So we continue to, you know, keep professional and kind of get this resolved.
Yeah, I think it's important just because if, you know, public's driving through, or you're listening for the first time, the caps over the lights and all that, that's not a delay on the town's issue. I mean, not the town's, but we are, it's not a town issue, other than we have to work with those parties who aren't being cooperative. But it's clearly not a delay on our end, so thank you for that additional.
Yeah, just if I may, I know. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I also know that, you know, some concerns have been raised, and and I'm sure that if we do anything else related to pedestrian or sidewalks or crosswalks at any other intersections in town, that having DOT and Eversource on the same page, so we don't run into this every single time going forward, you know, because we don't want it to become a habit.
No, I couldn't agree with you more. So unfortunate, we didn't see it coming, it's the battle between the rates and the state, you know, it's just a touche, it's.
Yeah.
So fortunate. I continue to work with the Building Committee, numerous projects, Public Works roofs, so RFQs. Run along, get those done. So that's taking up some time with the office. As I said, we had Health Insurance meeting today, which is the chairman of that, going well. Met with the new Register of Voters today to try to get her feet wet on operations of the building and, you know, computer software and passwords and things like that, so that meeting went well, I thought, right down.
He's jumping right in.
Yeah, and then, believe it or not, we're gearing up, we're Maple Fest starting, they're meeting on Saturday mornings and starting to plan that, and it looks like, at least out of the gate, we're having quite a bit of people looking to volunteer and help out with that, so that's a good thing, too. So we're, we're busy. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, that was just the second aid on our agenda. Old Business, American Rescue Plan, State and Local Recovery Funds update, this looks the same as last meeting, Donna. So unless there's discussion.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
Is there, is there a plan for the three thousand dollars? I listened at the previous meeting, are we just holding it for now? What did the board decide?
Yeah, I would, I would hope that the the whole Board of Select would let us keep that in the contingency for the projects that we are having, in case we have some fluctuations and that's not a lot of money.
No, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, no.
A plan.
Yeah, I would, I would, and we could use it on a later date, but for now, we would, the suggestion would be that we keep that, let that build into a contingency, in case we already know that there's going to be some projects coming a little bit over.
Okay.
Because the interest will continue to add to that, so when we get a little more cushion, maybe we can feel some of that back.
Yeah.
Good question.
Absolutely. Sounds good, thank you.
Right. Discussion on that? Okay, thank you, thank you. Eight B is our Department of Public Works Action Committee update. So I will just read this item since, you know, he's struggling a little bit with his voice, the Department of Public Works, RFQ submissions for design services received Friday the third, eleven proposals were received and were reviewed, I'll add to that, in terms of my update, which comes following on on that. But they were, they were all eleven were reviewed by the committee. Some substantive proposals, I didn't count the pages, but the the booklets came in a large box, and there were hundreds of pages of material. And a testament to the, obviously, the folks that brought eleven entities in, clearly the town and staff and all that, that structured it. Richard Steiner, who did a lot of the heavy lifting from the depart, from the Building Committee, to drive that project, obviously, as well as the town. Then also a testament to the interest that these firms had in working with Hebron.
That's great.
And the project, those were evaluated, we have brought the list down to four of the eleven as a committee, and we're working with some additional questions and analysis to bring forward to Richard, and ultimately then coordinating with Andy's office to take the next steps, which would be to bring the final firms in for, in effect, a detailed interview process where, I don't know if you want to add any context to that, but that's, that's the next step, so making some really good progress, so that will probably be within, yeah, let's say, three week stops is that next step, to bring these firms in, and then the process that they'll undergo is to to work through the substantive, or the firm that gets selected then, and we contract with, will go through, obviously, the substantive work of putting the schematic design together and the costs and all that that come with that, but um, so the the update is a good one, we're making good progress, and we've got some terrific firms that we're talking to, we've narrowed down the list, and so we're moving forward with the next steps in that process.
You think we'll be having that basically done by the second meeting in February?
Yes, to bring before the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Todd, second week.
That's what, Richard.
Yeah, I think we're planning on that, and then bringing, obviously, yes, we're making recommendations.
Exactly. March restart budget.
Yeah, oh, no. Very narrow window, and we're very aware of the timeline, so yes, the objective is, because again, once that, if the board approves of that, then it's a significant process and a lot of time that's going to, and then obviously, we can shift our energies to, as a board, to to the budget, but um, that's, that's what I have, I mean, you're here in the audience, and Todd, the member of our Action Committee, is there anything else that I, did anything I missed or anything you wanted to add to?
I'm always hesitant to say too much.
I'll, I'll say too much then, so anyway, that's the update, is there any other questions? Andy, is anything you want to add to that, you're good, or you?
Well, just once the RFQ, if we nail it down to a firm, you know, actually do estimates on what the design's going to cost, then we're going to have to figure out where that money's going to come from.
I see you tried to roll my update. Talk about money. But that is the next step, and I, and I will, as I've said before, in all, in all seriousness, if this component is a significant expenditure, and and will require a sort of people to really stand up and notice and take, and it's, it's going to be a lot of money. And it's, I don't want to underestimate that, or at least start to prepare people to understand that this is not an insignificant cost, and this is just one of basically the next six phases or so, I mean, this is, this is the first step, but it's a, it's a steep drop, and we have to start expecting there's some significant dollars, and then how do we fund for that will be a significant topic of discussion.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah.
Would you see from a, I'm just like informing the public, and the committee's done a fantastic job of putting it out there with the River East and social media, et cetera. Would you be, or would you consider doing like a visual timeline of the project, like when proposed deliverables would happen, so that the public could say, okay, here's what it looks like?
That's a great question, and so part of the analysis that these firms came forward with was based on the specifics we gave them, they provided a timeline. And they were slightly different, and so once we narrow the firm down, then we can provide more details on the timeline, because then we'll have a more concrete timeline, but some of them were we thought were more reasonable, and some of them, like, I'll give you an example, we think maybe eighteen months is eighteen, twenty-four months, okay, we understand that's a good discussion point, one firm, I think, said three years, done their timeline, and they're not in the final four, because three years, that's not reasonable, and so yes, great suggestion, when we have the firm selected, then we'll be able to provide a timeline that I think we'll feel a little bit better about, because it reflects as well as our expectation.
Awesome, sure. Okay.
All right, Mr. Turney, that moves us to eight C, old business, Town Energy Evaluation, that was on last agenda, and so we are moving forward with that. I have a, we've gotten the the goals from last year, that's been communicated, we'll work together from the board's perspective. Tiffany and Keith will be doing a lot of the background work and then bringing the rest of the board together, so we're moving forward with that to try to continue to but a reasonable timeline, which ultimately has to coincide with the budget process, so we're very aware of that, and we'll be moving forward on that, so that is in the works. Everyone's good on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so eight D is, Tony Communications with the Hebrew Community, you want to add some perspective on that?
Sure, secondly, we wish to discuss communication strategies for the upcoming budget, also the review of current Board of Select meeting with social media and streamlining options, I know we've had some trouble in the past, I guess Donna told me last time it was a Facebook issue, but now that we're doing hybrids and people can interact, and if you can, you know, go to the website, click on through the agenda, you could pretty much follow the meeting, so I don't know if there's still a need to do the Facebook as well, we don't interact with Facebook, but that's up to the Selectmen to, you know, ponder and just decide whether they want to continue with that.
I'm sorry, do you mind if I jump? I absolutely think we need to stay on Facebook, I think the majority of people who live in this town are quite active on Facebook, and I think to just take away another streaming option, I know tons of people who actually prefer the Facebook stream, because they can just boot it up, and they don't have to download the GoTo app. I think GoTo is a great service, but you do need the app to use it, and that can be a process for people with who are on mobile, for example, so I can't get GoTo to work on my mobile phone, it only works on my laptop. So I think if we were on something like Zoom, which is a little bit more transferable to mobile situations, but I would be strongly against moving away from Facebook at this time. That's my professional thought.
Yeah, good, yeah, I mean, I think we need to find a balance. We're obviously having some, some issues on our end, and I agree with you that Facebook has a certain amount of throughput out in the community, and there's definitely a presence on it, but maybe we need to look at an alternative solution of like just maybe not having it on a tablet, and maybe getting another laptop or something to run the Facebook Live rather than the tablet, or or some more stable system, because I know a lot of our problems are just stemming from, at this point, equipment, so maybe we want to explore alternative equipment. I mean, I don't know if if the school has a presence on Facebook, or if there's another organization in in town that that has a presence on Facebook that has a different preferred method of streaming. Maybe they might have some insight on what works better, whether a laptop or something else is is better as a streaming option, but I know we've had some issues with hardware, maybe we just need to look at it from a hardware perspective.
That's a good point.
Donna, do you see a solution? I mean, do you have thoughts on it? I mean, obviously, the one that's making the connection.
We haven't had any issues with the iPad that I'm aware of, the last meeting, it was Facebook that had an outage or some issues, and it ran into the time when we were trying to set up that meeting, so.
So you don't think it's our equipment? You know, in general, you don't think it's our equipment? You're, you're saying it might be, I.
Well, I mean, we've had technical difficulties in the past, I just, you know, I want to explore.
But you think there might be some easier ways to take, you know, to to address it?
Okay. I mean, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, yeah, you're the guy who carries that thing.
That's what we're.
The little tablet.
It should be noted, too, just for the record, so everybody understands, it's, it's actually very rare, Facebook has like outages on, you know, I work with all the social media networks as part of my day job, and, you know, what goes out the least compared to something like X or something else? So, you know, I don't think one outage is a reason to stop streaming, but I would definitely support Keith's suggestion to just examine the hardware and see if there's a better way we can ensure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, but again, you know, a failure, a failure out there, and I think from a FOIA perspective, we have multiple avenues covering this meeting, so a failure on any that is not going to impact the continuation of the meeting for FOIA purposes.
Right.
But I I do agree that I think Facebook is used by a significant portion of the population, and just like we've seen with with the River East, you know, anytime you cut out one of these variety of tools, you lose a portion of the population.
Yeah.
And and I'm all about choice and inclusion, and I think we should try to keep as many options open as possible.
Like I said, it wasn't a criticism, it's just where I'm going with this is to get the feed or the taste of the board, but probably going to have to have somebody come in at some point and start running the equipment, because it's a lot to ask for the staff to, yeah, especially when we're having trouble with stuff and trying to organize or run the meeting itself, it becomes a lot. God forbid, if something ever happened to Donna.
Well, why that Donna, nothing's going to happen to Donna. So based on what I'm hearing, status quo, and we'll, we'll, you know, continue to evaluate either options or how we might address continued issues. But thank you for putting that on the agenda for our discussion. All right, so that'll move to.
Actually, I'm so sorry, Mr. Chairman, really quickly, if I might, also on here is discussing communication strategies for the upcoming budget, and I have a suggestion I'd like to share.
Oh, sure, I was thinking I was tied to that one.
Well, I was.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I was, I was just thinking, since we have, you know, like, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think how we can maybe increase like the board's social media presence during budget season, that may require a revision to the policy I dropped it, but the biggest complaint that I hear from people is that they, they don't know when the budget hearings are, there were people that were asking me, are the budget hearings public or are those private behind closed doors? And so I think we should start thinking about, is there a way we could empower myself, you know, to just post like, there is a budget hearing tonight, here's what we're reviewing kind of thing on Facebook, just to kind of have more participation on the front end, which I think has always been our challenge, right? We don't have enough participation at the workshops themselves, so I don't think we need to act on it tonight, Mr. Chairman, but I wanted to bring it forward as as a thought, as how we can supplement.
Well, I mean, we can't, I, we probably can't act on it, because all you're, what I'm hearing is that, you know, we're going to, you would use that platform to, not as an emergency strategy, a communication, but as an opportunity, because it's the budget season, as to send out reminders, I, I don't.
I think it's a great idea, I, I was personally thinking to be getting information in the River East stating when the budget meetings are, even listing what the anticipated topics are for that specific night, and having it both streamed and on Facebook.
Anything we could do.
Expand. I mean, that way, people can't say they didn't know, or if they say that, we have given every possible option for people to be able to get involved and or at least hear what's going on. You know, that's always been a critique that we didn't know, and you know, you can only do so much, but if we do that, and then, you know, okay, next, next meeting will be such as such a date, and we're planning on I don't think you can go any more than that.
Right, if you've done everything, if we could done everything we can do, that's, that's sort of the test, right? And the answer is. And the answer is yes. Um, we, we should do that. So I, I'm not, I'm fine with just saying we should do that. I don't think we need to make it any more formal than that. Do you? Or do I have to? It's not really a policy. It's just a, we're gonna.
I mean, I, I know Tiffany wasn't here and she's like, social media expert. But like last, last meeting, you know, I had brought up making sure that we're saying an open meeting and, and publicizing like on the website and stuff, the uh, email addresses, because, you know, a lot of people are not always able to hit these, these meetings. And they're watching recordings after the fact. And I do think that we need to make sure and reiterate upfront and often that they can reach us through email. And we encourage them to give us that, that written feedback so that we have their mind, even though they're not able to physically attend these meetings. So um, you know, just another plug in right now to say, please email the budget at.
I think it's Hebron Budget at Hebron City.
Hebron Budget at HebronCT.gov. So, you know, please, please send us in your, your concerns about the budget, your um, hopes and wishes for the town. And uh, we will definitely take those under consideration at the meetings as we go forward.
And even in your Facebook, you could probably have a piece that reminds people that this is how you can contribute. As a reminder, the next meeting is on this day, just to keep, keep that in front of everybody again. So I don't, I don't think we need to take any formal action other than say that it's a good idea. If everyone's good with that. Good, good discussion. Thank you. Okay. Anything else on that topic? It's like a rush through it already. Thank you. All right. So eight E, which is any other old business, Mr. Tany, from the town's perspective, any other old business?
I do not.
Anyone on the board?
No.
Okay, Mr. Tany, that moves us to nine A.
Nine A is economic development policy strategy. And with us, we have our town planner, Matthew Bordeaux, who present and discuss the town of Hebrews economic development policy and strategy, at least an overview uh, for the board. And he's open to open dialogue to see what you guys are thinking and how we can move forward in a positive manner. So Matt, take it away.
Thanks for joining us, Matt. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I was just gonna sit up. Why don't you go ahead and sit at the table?
Pick whatever name plaque you want.
It's a little awkward on the rocks.
Yeah.
All right.
Wait, Donna?
Too much modification in the camera?
Okay, so uh, thank you for the invitation. I'll consider it an invitation. Um, uh, my name is Matt Fordo and the Planning Director, Director of Planning and Development, also known as the Town Planner. Uh, was asked generally to speak on the town's economic development strategy, substantially something, you know, that comes through my office. Um, and uh, in working with various boards and commissions, I um, obviously directly involved with every day. Um, without a great deal of direction, I sprinkled a handful of thoughts together um, that, you know, if you'll entertain me, I'll get the opportunity to speak with you as a commission too often. So um, I'm gonna try to maximize it. Um, you know, I'll start from a high level, try to work in some examples of uh, where I think strategies uh, are working. Um, make a suggestion or two and, and ultimately uh, open it up to you guys. Perhaps leave it with a question, you know, in terms of where should I go with this? Or did I answer the question ultimately what your concerns or your thoughts are? Um, so starting from the top, you know, really um, the economic development strategy uh, starts with consistency with the plan of conservation development. So um, when I talk about the plan and the corresponding zoning, meaning uh, the uses and where they're um, intended to be located in town, uh, we have a pretty well-defined framework uh, in a rather limited area um, to accommodate commercial development. These areas of, have remained substantially the same over several, several decades. In terms of the footprint in town hasn't changed a lot. The uses remain substantially comparable to what they had over the years. Um, and I believe that the case here is that this is the intent uh, for the, the approach to maintaining what and why people are here in the first place uh, as a bedroom community, which reality is that's where we are. Uh, maintaining world character, environmental integrity. Um, you know, a, a sense of safety and a sense of community. That's, that's where we thrive uh, and that's certainly going to be the priority going forward. Um, within that framework, within the framework of what I call the comprehensive plan, so the plan of conservation development, zoning regulation, zoning map, various plans that are referred to in the plan of conservation development. Um, economic development, we know is important to generate additional tax revenue through real property and or pro- personal property taxes. Right now, I don't have an exact figure, but pretty confident in saying that less than five percent of the town's real property portion of the grand list comes from our business community. So that's my opinion, but in balance. Um, economic development also provides employment opportunities, um, access to goods and services. So while those may not have as much an influence on the grand list, um, they're critical to uh, a desirable place to live. Um, in terms of a policy or strategy, and this, um, I kind of, you know, fleshed out a little bit, you know, conversation with the Economic Development Commission. Number one priority, principal foundation um, of community economic development to support existing businesses. Uh, the latest iteration of the Hebron Economic Development Commission being made up of new members representing owners, managers and consultants of existing Hebrew-based businesses. Uh, understand this is the number one approach. Um, and choose to, and this is part of the reason why they chose to establish their relationship or a newer relationship with Connecticut River Valley Chamber. Um, because there's that strength in working with sharing information and growing existing businesses that I think, you know, was desirable to the EDC. Um, in order to do this, the EDC is kind of re-um, committing to sharing information and getting to know businesses, building, actively building a contemporary contact list of existing businesses um, with the intent to share information. Something that we, you know, struggle with um, and, and certainly can, and certainly can improve. Uh, the idea is that success breeds success. And um, we, meaning myself and the current Economic Development Commission, uh, not that we can take credit for this, but uh, there are a handful of projects, both completed and proposed, that I'd like to share with you that underscore the importance of this uh, approach. So for example, you know, the, the town's agreed um, willingness uh, to agree with the Savian Sons property or, or owners. The swap land will facilitate their intent to construct a substantial new warehouse at their facility. This is a home, you know, homegrown business, growing from within. Um, Highline Automotive and Valvoline, uh, the former Tarkas, their wrecking ability condition, reconfiguring their site, investing. Uh, the veterinary hospital, they've completed a substantial renovation. Um, and they're, uh, have expressed an interest, I think I've shared with you in, in growing, uh, creating, uh, constructing a new facility, uh, expanding their offerings to, to the community. Uh, Flower Girl continues to grow. Uh, the renovation of the Gale House saved a historic building. New Cafe is under construction. She also has eyes on, you know, manufacturing or something, you know, to that degree. Um, had conversations with both Gina Marie's and George's about enhancements of their existing facilities. Black Beach Country Club just competed, completed their beautiful new facility, uh, practice facility. They're also under construction of a new um, building, building addition to house their uh, golf carts over winter. They have previously been shipping them offsite. Now they don't have to do that, save some money uh, on rent, transportation, keep them there. Um, in a way, while it's not complete, the town's facilitation and administration of state grant funding to four fifty-nine Church Street, known as the Tershen Mill or the Treasure Factory, um, has put us in, 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 with the cooperation of new ownership, have us on the brink of realizing a very exciting renovation project. Um, we're hopeful that the remediation can commence this calendar year of this construction season. Um, and I'll talk to you guys, maybe not today, but in the near term about some capital investment, I think, that warrants it to help facilitate help realize what they have in mind in terms of a destination, a restaurant, brewery, wherever it is. Um, in terms of growth, um, meaning newer development, I regularly field inquiries. I get them from existing property owners, asking what they can do with their property. Existing businesses, existing business owners looking for guidance on proposed enhancements of their existing businesses. And then from prospective business owners and developers looking for specific parcels of land for a new use or possibly um, locations for a concept that they don't, that can't find the right fit in terms of property to invest in. Um, some thoughts on my approach with folks that reach out to me that way. Uh, these vary from case to case. However, in all cases, I try to think about um, these folks as future community members. So I don't believe there's any value in putting them or encouraging them to invest in a location that is not in keeping with the neighborhood. Um, as I think the emphasis needs to be that this is likely to be one of the most risky and, and costly uh, investments of their life. Uh, I want to put people in position to succeed, um, but succeed in a way that is consistent, like I said, from the top with the goals of the community. Um, to me, you know, that means, you know, trying to put them in a, in a location that, that is appropriate where um, they're going to be embraced by the neighborhood. Uh, you know, not always as easy as it sounds, uh, but to the degree possible. Um, and have features that are going to be beneficial to whatever operation that they pursuing uh, or use, user activity that they're, they're proposing. Uh, I also try to be honest about the expectations of the community, particularly in terms of permitting. Uh, we do have high standards, uh, the reason for that. Um, however, I've found that various boards and commissions have been willing to work with, with uh, the folks. I always encourage prospective investors, occult investors, because it's an investment, however it might look, um, to share their ideas with Economic Development Commission and conduct pre-application meetings, non-binding pre-application meetings with various boards and commissions from whom they will receive permits. Um, oftentimes I'll field inquiries, you know, from someone that has specific use in mind and they may have seen a listing um, for a particular piece of property. A really good example of that is the numerous inquiries I've received for nine Pendleton. When you think about Pendleton, there's a hard bend in the road and the outside corner, outside elbow. There's three, three-quarter acres, one available property, difficult site. Uh, it's also in our Main Street District, which formerly known as our general business zone. Um, it's likely I'm fielding these inquiries because of the size of the property when they see it listed three, three-quarter acres. It's a lot of work with. When you get to know the site a little bit better, it's some limiting, a lot of wetlands on the site, uh, limited frontage on the site. Um, and also probably prices, right? Um, example of this is, you know, a gentleman, you could, rather than say specifics, say most of the inquiries that I receive are industrial in nature, probably not the best fit for the center of town. But rather than pick them to the curb or signal them, um, what I'd like to do is better understand their concepts and think about what are the other locations in town we might be able to accommodate them. Uh, in some cases, you know, they're looking specifically at a piece of property and I want to know about it. They want to have that conversation. But sometimes it's like, well, I've been looking and looking, I'm not getting anywhere. I'm open to whatever ideas you have. An industrial use might be a little bit more appropriate for our Amson Village District. Um, there are existing somewhat comparable uses down there, you know, pool, Savian Sons. Um, there is historic history uh, for that district. We're also kind of sitting on some underutilized property. Not that we own it, but we've zoned it for our commercial technology zone, which is down on the frontage of Old Hartford Road. Intent there, good access to the highway. Uh, once upon a time, going a ways back, there was a more of a concept where we would collaborate with the town of Colchester. We created a whole business, industry park, so to speak. Things have changed over time. We know that. Had sense to happen. Uh, but we're still sitting on, you know, there's still some very viable property down there. And we know that, um, you know, Mr. Silvio has been in front of the planning as a commission a couple of times, representing property owners down there that look for ideas, looking for, quite frankly, a way out. If invested in the property, we're looking at, you know, maybe retire out. Um, so industrial scale uses or uh, type uses are certainly more appropriate down there. And I mentioned one gentleman I spoke to had a concept for a warehouse where he wants to house his roofing company. He's thinking, you know, essentially about a metal building. Uh, it's probably not going to be an appropriate thing for the center of town. You have design standards that apply, you know, we're kind of building a different vibe here. Um, but certainly down in that, in that neck of the woods. So if the property is available, I can make a reference. If not, it's underutilized property that I'm more than happy to reach out to existing property owners and say, hey, what are you thinking about? Uh, do you have, you know, would you be open to some ideas and make a connection, having to do that? Um, so again, you know, some inquiries fit neatly into the framework of our so-called comprehensive plan, others don't. Um, you know, uh, but we know economic development is very important for the town of Hebron, you know, I've taken that, tried to take that seriously and uh, want to be responsive. Kind of leads me, I'm jumping a little tangent here. It leads me to a point I want to make emphasize. Um, is that, as I've been working with different business owners, uh, particularly those interested in starting from the ground up, meaning literally shovel in the ground, um, it's absolutely overwhelming to me the amount of risk, the amount of time, the amount of energy that goes into starting a business. I can't imagine there would ever be a harder time than now do that. Um, nor can I imagine, uh, I, I can't even, I can't even really wrap my head around the investment, the upfront investment particularly. That's probably coming out of pocket before loans are even really considered. That goes into starting, uh, looking into a piece of property, determining it's the right fit, navigating the permitting process, directing a structure, occupying the structure, employing that structure and then, or employing that business before you can even generate your first item of it, like. So I say that because what I think is absolutely necessary is that all the boards and commissions and to the degree possible, the general public acknowledge that and are, are working together with a common goal. Um, in terms of embracing particularly the, the, the businesses that, that, that start from within, uh, embracing, you know, what they're bringing rather than treating them, you know, you know, with a, with a persecutorial approach, which sometimes you get when you're going through the permitting process. Um, so you know, I guess, I guess in a way, I guess what I'm saying, not that I'm charging you with anything like that, but it kind of starts from the top down, right? So the directive and, and the, and that goal, you know, to the degree that the board can, as elected officials, but also as representatives of their political parties, perhaps can, you know, help in that effect.
But, but stop me there for a second. The, um, so we have, right or wrong, obviously we have this reputation of being difficult. Um, whether or not that's true, uh, uh, but that reputation, do you think it stems from a lack of, of a cohesive perspective on what the ultimate objective is for our community? Like, so if a commission, you know, you come before a wetland, they may have their own agenda. Um, does it necessarily always coincide with the broader agenda? Uh, or, or any of the, any of the different intersections with uh, the process? Do you think that lack of, uh, of a cohesive executed vision is what generates that reputation?
I think in some cases, I mean, there may be personalities involved and individuals that just, you know, have a different uh, different perception of what the community's goal is. Might not be consistent with the, you know, uh, what's outlined in the plan of conservation development. Or maybe there's an interpretation of that that's a little bit different. But when it comes up, comes to, you know, i- if you think about what we've done and what we've been working towards, right? Significantly invested in, in the. If, if you think about what we've done and what we've been working towards, right, significantly invested in, in the preservation of the state. Uh, significantly invested time and effort and studies and all, all the like into being careful about how we make. Public improvements to maintain the integrity of our environmental. You know, resources. We, we've made that effort already. We've not really made a great deal of effort for it is, um. Is, is, I don't want to say flexibility, I don't, I don't even want to say we're not bowing down, we're not trying to neglect. Responsibility, uh, when it comes to. Again. Site by site. The quality of the work that's being put in or, or the potential for impacts to natural resources. But my opinion, there can be an overreach in some cases. Reaching outside perhaps of jurisdiction, you know. Asking for a little bit more, what, we need more information, we'd like another, another study, you know. Perhaps you can make an off-site improvement or something like that. Those accumulate, it costs a lot of money. To the point where they could compromise the original intent of a particular person's interest in investing in the community. So I just think like there needs. I, I totally appreciate, you know, the, the commitment of our volunteers. And I don't want to step on anybody's foot, but in some cases, I have experienced that. I, I guess I've been a little bit reluctant to kind of push back, typically will guide. Effective developers or the applicants themselves, say, hey, look, you can only go so far until you've. You know, you put us out of business before we started the business. Um, so I can do that, but. It would be better served if it was just like, understood. We have, you know, I don't know if that was really the response you're looking for.
I, I don't, didn't.
How to articulate that, it's not the easiest.
Well, right, because it's, we have this reputation, we have, if we looked at the goals and you articulated them really on of why people enjoy our community, the first thing they. Say is not, you know, business development, you know, they have the real character, the open space, the education, you know, lots of things. But as I mentioned, right, balance between preservation and progress, right? So progress is supporting economic development, um, because we have done foundational wonderful work with some of those other elements. Of historic preservation, open space, all those things, so how do you create that balance? Because we do hear quite a bit about we need to lower our taxes and all that stuff and, and they're, they're not going lower. I would try, how do we sort of mitigate some of the increases? And not lose sight of the services that we need and all the investments that we have to make, but I think for the public to think their taxes are going down, they're, they're not. Um, so how do we then help to reduce some of that impact going forward? What are the things that we can do? Clearly, we can take our, you know, four point eight percent or five percent of taxes that, you know, that come from. Businesses and maybe that's eight percent or nine percent. That's real progress and, and that message does have to come across to all the, uh, commissions because they may be myopic in their approach, which is, you know, this is best for. Me and my charge of my, uh, sitting on a historic property, you know, whatever it is. Step back, how do I balance that charge with the needs of the broader community? And so I am disappointed when I hear we have this reputation, uh, not just, not like currently, but just in general. Cause it's, I've heard that for a number of years, even before I served, uh, in, in this capacity. And, um, and so we do have an opportunity to change that perspective and so. I, I am very interested in, in how we can get the messaging out that we need to work, we got. To balance the needs of all those boards and commissions, because they have independent structures for a reason. To make sure that, you know, we don't, you know, pave the whole center of town, you know, or whatever. So, um, okay, so it's an opportunity for, for us to, to collaborate or communicate potentially better than we have been in terms of the open mission.
But that was my tangent, that was my call to. All to engagement and, and appreciation, like, kind of like what, a little bit of where I've been seeing. Back in terms of economic development, specifically applicable to those that are seeking to invest from outside the community or those, those that we might be interested in. I think those strategies are substantially outlined in the, you know, the, uh, Economic Development Center Program Guidelines. Those were adopted in twenty ten, revised in twenty seventeen, probably more revisit. They are, they are, you know, there's a series of desirable industries or desirable types of businesses that are outlined there. Again, probably needs to be revisited. But those are consistent with the market study that was done with rather extensive effort in twenty thirteen. A lot of good information came from that. That's outlined, actually, there's some decent summary of it, the Planet Conservation Development, if you don't want to dig up the old report. From a practical approach, however, um, perfectly honest, I haven't invested a lot of time in recruitment, uh, or solicitation of outside industry. We have some limitations, so I don't want to be, uh, making, you know, getting people excited about things that I can't facilitate. In terms of the investment.
And if I get in trouble again, I, I do, I think that's a good point to stop and address what. Um, we had heard, uh, through social media that there was some perception that the board of selectmen, I mean, if you could articulate this, please.
Yeah, so, um, you know, basically I think there's some misinformation out there and, and the point I think of this meeting is for us to discuss it openly. Um, but I think that there were some people who felt that the board of selectmen or the town itself, um. Effectively reached out to Dollar General and asked them to submit a plan. And I think it would be great for you to clarify that, that private landowners are a very separate animal from the lands. That we have purchased for town purposes and it was not any member of this board or anyone in particular. It's just, you know, it, it's not how it works and I didn't know how to articulate that and so I'm hoping.
Yeah, so, um, well, I mean, in terms of confirmation, that, that doesn't, that, that's not our approach, um, that is absolutely the case. From time to time, I will formally or informally, um, you know, make, make my pitch to, to. Directly to folks that I think are like, the fit that everyone knows is pretty obvious, you know, so what do we know? We, we have an idol, uh, you know, uh, former, you know, who certainly would benefit the community for that, yeah. What are we missing? Not to discredit any of our existing businesses, everyone is important in this community and folks that are here provide an excellent service. Uh, but maybe we're missing a little bit of a higher end, more trendy eating and dining, eating and drinking experience. It's something that I, you know, kind of gone out of my way to solicit when I have the opportunity or feel inclined. Example would be, you know, Jessica Cody, for those of you who know her down at Virchell Tavern, something like that, I think would be a fantastic. The restaurant group that runs, you know, the two whole wells, the cellulitis of the world. Um, I know a lot of the folks that have kind of thought come down from that coaching tree, so to speak. Uh, that could probably be in a position or aren't in a position to provide a really good product, you know. Again, I don't, I don't want to set anybody up or. Another example would be, you know, circle back to, to your response would be, you know, Craig Ryan, Director of Parks and Recreation and I. Visited Earthlight Technologies, these are the folks that won the contract for installation of the lights. At the athletic field, Veterans Park. I don't know if you guys are familiar with these guys, but they invested in the new facility in Ellington. Now, why did they choose Ellington? They, they grew up in Ellington, there's no, there's no mystery there. But one of the state's first net zero buildings. They're growing like, like, you know, by the minute. Their, their employment culture, I guess if that's what you call it, is, is like mind boggling. Education all the time, I mean, the place is decked out in. Gardens and, and everything else, uh, they have, uh, off the grid, like, uh, community room type thing out the back. Just overwhelming, similar to something like Giuliano's. Maybe they're interested in the satellite office, something along those lines. Please consider Hebron, maybe it's something we could build around. Those are the, that, in terms of solicitation, that's about as far as I go. In the event that. We revise our Horton Master Plan. The Village Square Master Plan. Because of the way we control primary there. Then solicitation makes a lot of sense, right? We have developed a plan, we want you to. Realize that plan. You know, how can you help us? That would be a solicitation that I would be spending the time to do. First, private property owners. Have every right, in my opinion, to market their property to whomever. Fits within the comprehensive plan, the zoning standards, the zoning map. Now, again, we do have high standards. But I think there's a good reason for that. If, you know, if, if there's any way I can assist, um, you know, I'm, I'm always happy to share information. Uh, better understand what a proposed use might be, that's not the same as solicitation. I'm happy to hear and, and guide folks through the permitting process in preparation for. Future investment, but again, typically that's folks that I know, um, and embrace. What the, what the goals of this community are. Understanding of what we're looking for. Not always the easiest thing to articulate, somewhat subjective in that way, but that's the reality of it. So, yeah, I mean, just, just simply to respond, like solicitation particularly with Dollar General, like, that's not, that's not what, like, county staff is doing. That's not any reports, reports, commissions are not. So, um. You know, I, I think just to, just to wrap it up, you know, if you'd like. Kind of Hebron is not really in the position to be dictating terms. When it comes, I mean, yes, we have, we have the framework, right, for, for investment. But. Depending on the scale of a project. The majority of municipalities, the more, majority of communities of our size and scale and demographic. Have to be prepared to, and to, to expect. That folks are going to need some incentive. To invest here, uh, in, in, you know, it's just, it's just a reality at this point. There might be unique circumstances. Where that's not the case. But that's a reality of, of what I see in terms of new investment. The other thing I'll note is that, um. Well, I think we could do it properly in terms of size and scale, uh, in, in terms of character and fit and all that stuff. He's going to have to embrace. Probably should, in my opinion, we should embrace some more. Population in a form of housing that is not already provided. Have a housing crisis, have an affordability crisis. That's not going away. You can, and, and, and so that directly relates to. Kind of like the cap on us in terms of a more, uh, you know, particularly like the things that people are looking for, retail. Services. You know, we're not going to be able to really accommodate much more than that if we don't have some more people that are going to patronize these businesses, so. If we could do that gracefully, uh, particularly on some of the town, that, some of the property that we control. Uh, and we can kind of, and, and then you want to talk about dictating terms, we can make, you know, projects that best fit even reality. Well, that's my pitch for a little bit more housing, this way, you know, this, we, we do get surveys that, that. Feedback is a normal population, in the same sentence, just say lower taxes and then we also look at the services, so those, those don't worry about that. So, um, I hate to say it, but that's got to be a part of, I think, part of the picture. I mean, that's kind of, kind of what I was hoping to chat with you, that, oh, that's my little spiel, but I'm more than happy to figure out the rules.
No, I, I, you know, I'd say I'd like to add a couple of things. First off, um, I've been on. Or to finance and all those, always stated that a single family home is the worst base that you could do with, uh. Tax base that you could have.
Yeah, well, it's enough, right?
Exactly. Costs more. For your services that you're giving and not getting for the taxes. You know, so, you know, that's my only concern, I'm not afraid of more housing, but it needs to be done balanced. And we need to understand that, you know, there's been some people that say, oh, let's build a bunch of houses, look at all the taxes we'll get.
Yeah.
It doesn't work that way and that cost is usually negative.
So I, I think that, that perception historically has been extended to housing generally. And, and the reality of the data now is that it's not the case, multifamily is a net winner. Now, it has to be scaled. And, you know, you have to, you have to be thoughtful about what our existing conditions are, but, um, generally speaking, there's a lot of information. That would support. More of that family, probably not going to get that support for it.
We just enacted the new, uh, plan of, of conservation and development. Has that been used as a club against any of the proposed businesses or too early to tell?
Well, I mean. I will tell you only the facts because. We should be anticipating an appeal. On, on recent decision regarding Dollar General. But in terms of support for the decision, which was to deny the application, yes. Inconsistency or lack of consistency, I should say lack of consistency. With the Planet Conservation Development was used, was, was one of the reasons for the denial.
And I assume that those specifics are going to be laid out if there is an appeal, correct?
Well, that, that probably goes beyond my, um. That goes beyond what I should address, because again, there's probably going to be.
Say it's legal, that's where all the lawyers get paid money for.
Are you able, I've tried, you've done all.
Yeah, there, there wasn't, I should, I should say it wasn't left at that, it wasn't just inconsistency. Went into regulations, specific regulations that was addressed in, in the reasoning behind it at the now, but it was. Inconsistency with the POCB was one, one of the reasons.
What was the specific regulation that was noted?
Uh, the motion specifically noted. Main Street District. Design guidelines, which is five A, Main Street District, which is three B. I think it was, it was another one, there's a special permit, um, that's here regarding current building, yeah.
Refer to it in the motion. Are you able to, uh, talk about some businesses that are coming to town that are sort of in the next step of the process or that process, just?
Yeah, I mean, so, so I did outline a handful of them, maybe I already, you know, or is it like, uh? Give it away.
Well, no, I just, it's an opportunity to revisit that, I mean, I don't think it's new news, it's just an opportunity to sort of, because that is a highlight of businesses are coming in, that clearly. Highlighted.
Yeah, we're really excited about a couple of things, uh, or I'm really excited about a couple of things. So the Ellenberg Parcel, which is at the corner of, uh, Old Colchester Road and Church Street, opposite Wildbills. That's, uh, I think it was a twenty-six acre parcel. It, the way it's zoned, it's a split zone on the, on the parcel, interior with frontage on Church Street. Approximately six acres, includes three commercial parcels. So we have applications, I'm waiting any day for applications, we already actually have processed some through the, uh, in the Wetlands Agency, Conservation Commission. With three new uses. Even residents, Sean and Bria Comer are planning to start a business, Sean's dream to. Replicate his grandfather's nursery, garden nursery concept. Eila actually, his intent is to also acquire one of the two residential parcels that abut. The, the center, commercial parcels, because agricultural uses are permitted use in that area, they'll do some of the growing operation. That will ultimately be available at retail on the, on his business side. The middle of the three parcels and I'm working my way from south to north. Ria Comer, uh, plans to construct a mini, miniature golf course. That would be constructed and landscaped by her husband Sean, kind of a cool way to, uh, exhibit some of what's available. Their intent, this is, this has not been permitted, but in terms of their concept, their intent is to share parking. So as to limit the number of curb cuts on Church Street. Third parcel to the north. Is likely to be acquired and I've seen the concept planned for. the Connecticut Equine Clinic, which occupies space directly across the street in the in the building where there was historically a doctor's office at the thing. So they're in there. That's really their headquarters because they're substantially this, as you would say, remote, right? They have a small fleet of vehicles and they go to farms to care for horses. They have a post and beam structure that they plan to erect with a barn in the back. I mean, in terms of a transitional use between commercial and residential, I don't know if you can get it better than that. Again, they've already invested in this community immediately across the street. I think those are, those are pretty great ones. I am looking forward to the Xavier Brothers investment in their new warehouse. Again, the Tersha Mill, I really hope to see shovels in the ground this, this construction season. That would ultimately, you know, their plan again is a restaurant retail establishment. This is not commercial, but at the Wellswood Apartments, the owner there is going to be adding some additional units, exactly the same model that already exists. Regulations were revised probably two, two and a half years ago now that allows for higher density as long as that some of the units are restricted affordable. Russ is there. Again, I told you about pending construction at the Highline Automotive in Valley.
Subdivision.
So there is a single-family subdivision called Lakewood Estates approved in 2010, 2011, beginning in 2011. Thirty-two units, single-family homes, access from Hillcrest. And three units with a shared driveway off of the access drive to the firehouse.
Fire company too.
Yep. So that's been idle for a long time. There's been a lot of conceptual revisions to that plan to try to make it more attractive to prospective developers because, again, the reality right now is investment in public, you know, the public improvements of road, utilities, lighting, preparation of lots, just really, really expensive to do. But I guess the price has finally been worked out. So that will likely happen. Maybe even activities started in this spring. Then again, you know. Oh, is that the Boathouse? One less made at the, what is it? Southwest corner of the intersection of 85 and 66. You probably see this for sale sign up there for a while now. That's probably going to be closing and the owner, second owner is actually essentially a historic restoration professional. Done a number of projects in Massachusetts, and I say this, that's like the, you know, like the proof of his integrity, I guess, that municipal, municipal historic societies in Massachusetts that own property have actually hired this guy to do their restoration purpose. So he does plan to make it, my understanding is he plans to make it, you know, commercial whether that's offices or wherever it might be. I would imagine that, you know, to make that really work might be a mixed use setup where there might be an apartment upstairs. So that's another one. We have conceptual plans for restoration of the barn behind on the green behind 1214 Main Street, like that barn back there. You know, talk to you guys about this later, but maybe a little public nudge could be the stop shot of projects like that. So a lot of, you know, I should say a handful of things for Hebert with real, honest, I think, and in my opinion, compatibility with neighborhoods and Hebert generally that are worth being excited about.
Well, thank you so much.
Just, just again, a quick comment. And back to Tiffany's point, I mean, these are, this is all coming to us first time. This is not, you know, we as a board of selectmen, do not get involved, especially in a, the starting foundation groundwork of any of these projects. It's nice to know what's going on, but that is planning and zoning. Not for selective.
I think if I can piggyback on that too, I think what this also illustrates is a lot of this is information I need and learning for the first time. I think we need as a board, I would respectfully posit that we need to have these conversations more frequently. We need to be aware. How is the economic development strategy? Do we need a part-time person to come in and kind of drive that? Because I know that there's you know, I think I probably have some quibbles here and there with how the plan of conservation development is being used. And especially our approach to open space, which is something I've spoken openly to the Open Space Commission about. But I do appreciate you being here and filling us in on this information. And I also want to say I greatly appreciate your comment on housing because you are absolutely right. It is a crisis. We need to acknowledge that it's a crisis and we need to acknowledge that we don't have enough stock. So thank you.
Going back to when the plan of development was being discussed, I mentioned again, there's a definite disconnect between what's going on with Board of Selectmen and what's going on with planning and zoning. And I stated even back then, kind of sort of at least need to know where the waste coming from, what their plans are. Because our long-range vision for the town may not be what their long-range vision is.
It definitely wasn't mine. I voted no.
You know, so it's two different entities of, you know, important dummies working in the vacuum from each other.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree. I think housing is important, but as far as like some of the things that we've outlined, some of the notes I've taken. I don't necessarily know that it applies in this case because the fact of the matter is that we have a fantastic town and this town has a fantastic location. And that location is right on the corner of 66 and 85. So when it comes to retail or business development, we don't need a huge humanity base in town. They drive through. If we could get people to stop and patronize retail development in our town, we don't need a thousand extra residences. We have 20,000 people going down 66 every day. We have probably half that going down 85. We're very close to Colchester. We're very close to Glastonbury. We're in between people headed between Middletown and Willimantic. I mean, we have the University of Connecticut right down the road, but all their employees that live on the other side of the river and come across Portland and drive their way in. Now, I know it's not every day because they do a lot of work from home, but I mean, the, the connection that was made tonight between housing and business development is not a connection that I would have made. It is disappointing to me. I disagree with Selectwoman Ely. I think that Dollar General is very much our fault. I think that we brought Dollar General here. Because the fact of the matter is, is that we have not promoted business. We have made several comments discouraging business and telling them about all the hurdles. If I'm a business owner, and believe me, if I'm a business owner, before I take a proposal to start something, I have all my ducks in a row. I should be already securing that capital for my business. I don't want to go somewhere with this vision and meet with somebody who's like, your vision sucks. It just really doesn't work here. Okay, I'll take it elsewhere. And by doing that, time and time and time again, we are left with large corporations like Dollar General who don't care where they set up. And they will push the issue here. Because we have not already put a business in that location, a business that would be more apt to be part of our community. So we are the problem. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for your time.
Yeah, great.
We'd love to see you here maybe on a quarterly basis. We continue like.
It's just another night, Matt.
Going back to what's going on. And I think it's also just for the public's edification because again, there's a lot of misconceptions in the ether. There's a lot of people making assumptions about what we do or don't do. And, and this, these are the types of opportunities where we can set the record straight. And all the things that you mentioned to me are very exciting. I didn't know about that. There's, again, there's much speculation, oh, wow, you know, land's being cleared over by Wild Bill. What's going on? And people are saying, oh, things are just coming out of people's, you know, what's like, so it's good to know that, you know, in the way that you described it, and I can see the enthusiasm in your face that, that we can't really ask for a better scenario, these folks coming in. And then to your point about us having that, that that vibe that we're, you know, not really business friendly, that we have too many, too much red tape, too much bureaucracy. But yes, we have then created vacuum. And then all these quote-unquote, you know, undesirable, those big corporations have come in because it's almost like, I hate to say it, but like the vultures are coming in for the kill. And that's what, and that's what DG did. And so probably we have to look at ourselves in the mirror and say, why, why didn't we do something more to avoid this really unsavory situation that we are now going to find ourselves in with the patient? And, yeah, all the costs associated with that. Guess what, guys? That these lawyers got to be paid from somewhere.
And I think if I could add one more thing, I know that you were sorry to disagree with me, but I'm actually going to turn it around and say that I agree with you. When I talk to people and constituents and I talk to them about the vision for this town, to me, it comes down to a couple of choices. You can have a primarily residential base with no business and your taxes are going to go up. That's just the reality of conducting town services. I hate to break that to everybody. If you want good schools and you want town services, you're going to have to pay taxes if you don't have enough of a viable business base to back it up. So I think the town has a lot of work to do and some soul searching to do to figure out what that vision is and to not let land just sit vacant for so many years. That's why it's critical that we talk about before in master plan again, what is the future of that property? This town purchased that property for a purpose that is now no longer the purpose. What are we going to do with that? So I think these are all great questions. I'm just going to flip it around and say, I do agree with your point, even if you disagreed with me initially. Thank you.
And I just had one other question about the Connecticut River Valley Chamber of Commerce. Can you give us sort of, I think we've had a formal relationship now with them for about a year now. Can you report back as to how that relationship is going? What's the change in your opinion, good one? What are they doing to support us in our vision of increasing our 5% business tax base maybe more?
You know, I'll be honest with you. I don't think that it's sounding Hebert has really optimized that relationship in the services yet. We have, we have liaisons from the Economic Development Commission that attend their meetings. We had the opportunity to publicize events. They are going to be assisting, I believe the plan is for them to be assisting on center project in operating the, they have a business here, something that they have a skill set in. It's only, it's the Economic Development Commission is working through, you know, the assistance of the assessor's office development of an up-to-date business directory, essentially. So, and without that, you know, sharing information is a little bit more difficult and perhaps, you know, could be considered being executed unfairly. We're trying to, you know, make sure that we have our ducks in a row. I don't really have too much to report other than that right now, but.
Right. Because I think what you had stated a few minutes ago, by your admission, you just don't have the time. Right? So here's my next question to you. Would you consider investing in maybe a part-time position where the focus of this employee would be to bring in or business development and growth for the town?
So the town has done that in the past, right? We've contracted with I don't know if it was planned. A couple of different.
Yeah, I'm not even talking about like a contractor.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, maybe your, your, the idea of a part-time employee makes sense because then there's a better familiarity. There's not other commitments, better familiarity with, with the community, what goals are, what the lay of the land is, individual use of property, you can make relationships with people that a consultant may not.
Yeah, and also capitalize on the Connecticut River Chamber.
I would, I would, you'll see when you start to consider some of my recommendations as well to the process and the capital planning process. I suggested a little bit of a different twist, spending more of my time doing something like that. And relieving me and the, in the current zoning enforcement officer, a little bit of the more administrative functions that we serve right now. So I did that in the form of essentially a zoning technician, right? So help facility or help prepare for all the meetings and, and permitting that we do. Whereas I could spend a little bit more time working with Economic Development Commission, Chamber and the like. Think the benefit of that approach is the building official wearing a zoning enforcement officer hat, not realistically. Building official has way more than he can even do currently, let alone trying to do any enforcement or enforcement. And if we're going to be successful in the application of our regulations, zoning enforcement is a necessary evil. You know, you gotta keep up because, you know, you get a little bit too lean and I hate to say it, but there's no doubt that the high standard that I think benefits everyone can be compromised. Whether or not it's, it's delivered. So I, I think that's, that was my recommended approach. I think there's certainly other, you know, considerations. We, we haven't probably grown the planning department since it was a 3,000 member, or a 3,000-person town, you know, resident.
When was that? Yeah, seventy-seven.
So, and, and I know we only have so much capacity, right? So we have other needs too. Maintenance is one of those needs for sure. Sharing information, you know, is one of those needs. So, you know, I'm reluctant when I'm looking at the whole lens to say that that investment would be the most appropriate, but it's also a good idea.
It's a good idea and one we've obviously continued to discuss.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
So you can remain seated if you'd like, because nine B is, if we will move on to the 2025 Steve Grant application and then obviously Mr. Tierney, but we're also maybe relying upon you. So if you could just stay there for a minute and I'll turn over to Mr. Tierney.
Thank you. So this is a quick turnaround, though it always is. In the past, we had some time to build some list, but that's not the case right now. So let me read this and then I'll turn it back over to Matt. So the 2020 small town economic assistance program, Steve right application due by February 20th, 2025. Basically, the task guidelines of town planning to go and the town manager will be here, discuss priorities and proposals for potential grant applications with the board of selectmen. So with that being said, we're not dictating to you what we think. If you guys have some sort of goals that you're thinking about that we don't know about, let us know. But in Matt's defense, it's a short turnaround time. There's a lot of work to do to get that grant in and there's criteria that grant calls for, which is spelled out in the package. So with that, I know Matt has a couple of objects that he was thinking of. He wanted to just float those out there and see what you guys think.
Yeah, so the quick turnaround time is a challenge. And it's bizarre because no, it's always been quite so limited, but no, it's always been quite so limited, but the announcement came very late this year. So I don't know if that actually trimmed our timeline or not. I have a little bit of legwork to do because I have to close out some existing ski grants, which we are very, very close to doing, which is the Wall Street sidewalk project. I have an extension. We're not in any kind of jeopardy of not getting the reimbursement, but I do need to close that out because I do stipulation that I think is is newer to the program is they don't want to any outstanding projects. So we'll clean that up. The other, the, the, the exciting thing is that, you know, you can see projects up to a million dollars now. It used to be five hundred thousand. A competitive project application includes twenty percent match. Town can also apply for more than one. Now, these are, these are physical improvements typically. So usually a municipality's approach is they, they're matches designed design services. So thankfully, we have some really responsive, very capable engineers that we work with regularly at Ethan O Jacobson. So we actually have some pieces of information prepared for a couple of my thoughts. Originally, I was going to approach you guys with two ideas, first of which was what was previously an application. Don't have enough information to determine what happened with this one. Either it was not submitted or it was declined. Where there was elements about it that just didn't satisfy the program at the time. But that would be to take the existing water main, a North Pond Road, and extend it to the, to the intersection of Church Street. That would provide access to public water for the church. My feeling there is that they're going to run into problems with Department of Public Health when going to regulate or 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 to navigate the regulatory process regarding drilling well on a brownfield site to serve like the transient population of what they call a community well of a restaurant or, you know, whatever they wind up doing or something like that. So access to reliable is that water main of sufficient size. Because I know that it did not have sufficient size for fire fighting capabilities. So I have a meeting scheduled Connecticut Public Water. The principal concern is, do we have the supply? Second concern is, you know, if, you know, is the pipes and everything are, are the, are the, are the technicalities in place. I believe they should be, it should be good with them because this application has been considered in the past. In that event, it went up to the intersection of Church Street and South Church Street, on the five oh one Church Street.
Right.
Where the town owns property, also a brownfield project. In the past, we had a concept plan for redevelopment. The idea was with the bike shop and everything, our, our development partner took a different approach. We have real, they were real project leading, you know, in a way through the church, you know, they're real investors. I'm hopeful that the approach will be that D C D would look favorably because they were already committed some funding. We really want to see a success. So that, that's, that's why I think that might be a decent approach. Yeah, thoughts on that one?
Yeah, just quickly, the original plan was when we got the funding, we're going to get the funding through Kent the Osten. We're going to tie the two systems together. Connecticut Water came back and said they didn't have the quantity of the water, but since that, they've drilled a new well down there. And with that being said, what we're, what we're talking about now is not connecting the two systems together. We brought water up from the mill at Stonecroft and we've got some other things in the works. We'll be presenting to the board a second later on when we get the information. On what's possible on the water sources. But so the two big things now, when we go back to that, is we're only looking to service those that area. It's not going to come up and tie into the other. And they didn't have enough quantity to do what we were presently going to do, but this is a lot less usage of what Matt's proposing. Plus, there's another well drilled since that last design.
That, that one, if they do decide to go with a brewery, though, I think that's a little bit more significant of a water draw. I mean, at that point, are we going to say that, you know, maybe we can supplement them to a certain point? But then they need to factor into their permit a private non-potable supply?
So that would be strictly under the purview of Connecticut Water. We don't own or control any of the water in there. So that would be whatever their answers, I guess, so to speak. It's a possibility, I suppose. I, I, I think maybe the brewery thing, you know, so we're lacking a brewery, right? You see, you see breweries drop like flies off where friends like that. I don't know if that's a model right now that's going to be as interesting despite the fact that we don't have one. But it, well, if you guys have been in there, you should, you know, if you haven't, you should check it out. Exactly. I could call it a corner, but it, man, when you get in there, you cannot be anything but inspired by the possibilities. It's a great space. So and it totally looks like a brewery when you get in there, but but that's, that's my first idea. And the reason I, I, I like that one is because we have a lot of existing information already prepared for that application. The other one is a, the other one of the two that I was originally going to propose to you is a little bit of, of a, more of a concept right now. What might be interesting enough to be successful? Similar to, you know, kind of piggybacking off of the idea of the facade improver program that was done back in like twenty twelve, I think it was something like that, that actually benefited a lot of the existing businesses in town. My idea was you have a historic district center of town. You have only a handful of assets, so to speak, that contribute to that historic district. Some of them are in need of improvement. But the way that, you know, historically, those uses were all residential uses. And they had transitioned to the R, you know, town center where commercial uses are probably more appropriate or mixed uses. There are a handful, like Vogue House, the Toomey House. When Flower Girl relocates to her new cafe, the historic general store, the barn to the rear of, of that location. And then although it's outside the district, store property on the west and underutilized, the building, the house essentially next to these pub that has had a, a history of commercial uses. So I was thinking about framing a program similar to the facade improver program specific to historic structures with development partners in place, looking to invest in commercial, you know, business, you know, improvements, you know, facilitate that kind of a renovation to the interior. And basically putting out there either a loan program or a grant program with design services kind of guided by the town via perhaps a, a special committed committee dedicated to that program. The guidelines for historic restoration, secretary of security standards still apply. Money regulations still apply. But working with them with a little bit of a stimulus to get those projects off the ground. A lot, a few handful of them are, you know, very viable in the very near term. So I don't want to miss opportunities. I hate to see historic structures continue to decay. Also, don't want to see the wrong person get in there, make the wrong renovation. So that I thought was something far as a little bit of development, but we wouldn't develop the program too, too far without, you know, a commitment from the state, you know, to, to fund the program. So I think that's how that worked with Michael Leary or Tom Planner Program, Sound Improver Program, funding in place, going to build the program. That was one, that was another thing. Third one came up the other night in more conversations with, those are the two original I was going to come to you with. The, the third one came to me in conversation with planning, the learning commission. On Main Street, we have three gaps in our sidewalk that I would like to fill. And down Church Street at the end of our substantial improvement of sidewalks. Sidewalk stops bizarrely short in the vicinity of scooter bugs, I think. But leaves Georgia's and Wild Bill's without.
Yep.
And if we're going to have investment across the street, think if we ever want to pitch the idea of a mid-block cross with some flashing beacons, they're going to have to be appropriately located. And if we don't have sidewalk for at least one side where people can start from across two, we could be left in a lurch. So you'll see my, my capital expenditures request, I had design services that could be our match. And it would be the installation, those, those, those gap closures would be the, would be the third. Not sexy, but it's a, it's a kind of
Walkability.
So again, you know, I don't need the answer today. I'm going to be honestly, I'm trying to be, I'm going to be working on concept plans on each one of these regardless to build them, just so we're prepared in the future. And I would love to spend the time work up, work down a, a list. Also, I said, you know, the other board, other department directors, ideas, put together a list together and kind of re-up our steep priority list for future products.
And I don't know if it fell off of the ARPA funding. I know there was a lot of shifting around and there, but I know and, and it's just because I happen to drive that way and I'm sure other people that, you know, go down to the transfer station have seen it. It was brought up about additional parking next to the airline trail where it crosses Old Holchester Road. And I don't know if that parking made the final cut or got cut off of ARPA. I know there were some, I know perks and red. You know, figuring out what was, what was ready, what wasn't. So I mean, that's another thing because I, I pass by there sometimes where there's seven cars on the side of the road. And, and I know that Steve is, is looking for like shovel-ready stuff. And these were things that were already thought of as part of the ARPA, so maybe it's a little closer. You know, that's also why out of, out of some of the things that you proposed, again, I don't want to, I don't think we as a town want to get into these long drawn out steep grant issues. So, you know, the North Pond Water Extension, I think is something that would be a definitive timeline and, and, you know, have a distinct start and end time. And in addition to the, you know, restaurant or whatever ends up going in there, there's additional brownfields past it. I mean, there's a very successful dog grooming, but then there's, you know, rundown mirage. And there's a couple of, you know, I don't know if they're vacant, they might be vacant, I don't know, parcels in between. So, you know, this is a town that has some water issues and extending water out there to try to accommodate future business proposals in those areas. I think that that's looking towards the future for our town. So, you know, out of, out of your proposals, you know, the sidewalk gaps, the North Pond Water Extension, like I think those are all, you know, short and sweet kind of steep programs that we can look towards. You know, maybe if, if it's, it's close and maybe the dollar amount works out, you know, parking. Because again, you know, there's a lot of people in town that toe eco tourism, but the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, we have the eco, but we don't really have the tourism because people are parking on the side of the road. So the more that we can accommodate the use of our, you know, open spaces and, and green spaces, the more we're going to be able to draw those people in and them not have to, you know. I don't know if I'm going to come here again because I had to park on the side of the road and almost got hit by me taking my garbage to the dump, you know. So just telling us.
So that's very helpful. So what, what do you need us to do tonight? What do we need to do? This is information.
Yep.
I see the deadline and it's January sixteenth and this is February twentieth. So do you need?
Those concept plans a little bit.
Okay, okay.
Share a little bit more information with you at the next meeting and also potentially coming with some endorsements from other boards, see where they sit.
So the steep grant application will be your business and we'll continue to look for your updates going forward. You so much for coming. Great information. Thank you very much.
Done. It's, it's amazing, the laundry list of the projects that you're involved with and, you know, people don't see it.
Yeah, it's really terrific update and, and I've learned a lot and I feel the community's learned a lot as well. Thank you for all your hard work on behalf of the town. And that moves us to nine C, which is your draft agenda. So please take a look at that. Any thing you wish to bring before add to this agenda, please contact Donna or Randy and get that on the for next meeting, for February sixth meeting. And Mr. Tierney, any other old business, I'm sorry, excuse me, new business we wish to bring forward the board? The board, anything, or ninety, any other new business?
I mean, I, it, we can just put it on for, for next time. I did the count. We said the word P O C D five times. I know that it's been published and I know it's a ten-year thing, but we are allowed to revisit it in between those ten years. You know, I had some concerns and I think if we're going to be quoting the P O C D frequently in some of our more legal areas. Because I know when we had discussed it before, it was kind of passed off as not a definitive legal document. But I see it being kind of referred to more and more that way. So I think I'd, I'd like to kind of bring that up for discussion for the selectmen and, you know, see if maybe we want to talk about making a proposal to planning and zoning or whatever, to reconsider items that we think need reconsideration.
But we'll add that to the agenda.
I agree.
Yeah. Terrific. All right. Thank you for that. So that moves us to Canada agenda, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually. It may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair. Remove for later discussion in a separate vote if necessary. We have approval of the minutes, January seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting and tax refunds. Does anyone wish to remove anything from that consent agenda?
Just a point of order. If I wasn't at the meeting January second, had we clarified, I could still vote to approve them if I wasn't there. Should I, should we separate that out?
Did you watch anything?
No, I was trying to log into Facebook tonight.
I, I think your best stuff.
If you wouldn't mind.
All right. So we'll move forward and separate those two items. So a, a motion to approve the minutes of January second, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Moved and any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. But please note if you wish to abstain.
He's got an aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
How do you, Riley, aye?
Yeah, Peter Casper, aye. Motion carries with four in the aye and one abstention. That moves us to tax refunds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. But please note if you wish to abstain, Keith.
You've got an aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, Larson, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Lonnie Riley, aye.
Casper, aye. That passing answer, thank you. Days on, which is, I do not have anything moves to free H M U Services, Tiffany Hebron Board of Education.
Yes, so very, very briefly, the hour is upon us, but the Hebron Board of Education have their superintendent present their budget. I'm not going to take away their thunder. They're going to come and present to all of us as a group. But basically the themes this year are maintaining services, investing in student support, which is an area of need they found, especially with our, especially with like students with special needs. And of course, they're facing the same fixed costs as I anticipate we will in terms of insurance and the second year of the teacher's contract. So that's what they focused their last meeting on.
Thank you, Mr. Larson, Board of Finance. Thank you, Land Acquisition, Mr. Pettit.
Has not been.
And Board of Ed, Riley.
I have nothing to report of.
Thank you. That moves us to section twelve, please defer, if you wish me to repeat the structure of the public comment that I read earlier, but in lieu of that, Donna, anyone online that wishes to offer a public comment? Gentlemen and two in the audience, would you wish to offer a public comment? Yes. Yes, please state your name and dress and all, you know, the drill. Stand on the X.
Four, thank you for all you do. Street, Hebron. Just listening to all this, the meeting talk tonight, I appreciate what you said, how we're here because of the Dollar General is kind of because of the way we direct things. You have a liaison, every one of you, on one of the V O E, the U Services, the D P W Action. We got, we don't have one with zoning. I mean, I, I think that there's That, I mean, I I think that there's a big disconnect, as you pointed out, between zoning and the board. And I think it would be helpful to know and and to help steer the ship. I mean, I've been here since early eighties and the town is the same basic town through the center of town. Was really excited. I was one of the sixty-nine people that voted to buy that land in the center of town. Mike Leary put his life into that plan to get that approved and passed. We got all this and then we've get a handful of residents that are directing our town as to where, what we can and can't do with our property. And it's very frustrating to sit and watch it. We have zoning rules in place. To to Keith's point, you know, we we beg Dollar General to come because it's too hard for anyone smaller to actually do something. We were a business owner at time. We put an A-frame sign out in front. The sign police came and said, take it down. We don't have those. Uh, you're trying to run a business of no concept of what it takes to run a business. And a small business in this town is important. Most of our customers came passing through Heber. It stopped at our flower store. So it it's vitally important that the Horton property get revisited. If we're not going to use it, let's sell it. Let's sell it. It's zone and let somebody else that has to follow our rules and develop it and not be dictated to by the public that doesn't want us to use it. Thank you very much. Sorry if I'm a little hot. Been doing this for a long time and it's getting frustrating.
Thank you for your coming and thank you for your time and your comments. Okay, thank you. All right. So uh that is public comment. So that moves us to the thirty on the agenda.
Sorry. My comment about being young, I'm sorry. Um, move to adjourn the Hebrew Board of Selectments meeting at eight fifty-two P M.
Okay. That moves, that ends our meeting. Thank you so much. Thanks for those that joined. Uh, thanks to those that are watching this at a future date.